Ladies and gentlemen, we would call on the board now to speak to the council. The chair at this time will ask Bishop Brandon to come to the podium and give us the invitation. Councilwoman Stephanie Lynch will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to counsel mayor. Let's look to the Lord. Father, again, it's just a privilege to even call on you and to speak to you. And God, you blessed us with a wonderful day, and we appreciate you so much for your grace and your mercy. Your loving kindness is better than life itself. God, I ask you to bless the chair of our council and our council persons, our mayor. And, Lord, bless Shreveport. And even as they conduct the business today, I thank you for giving them the heart to concern themselves about all of the citizens of Shreveport. And, God, with that in mind, give them wisdom. Direct their path. It's in the name of Jesus we pray we thank you, sir. Amen.
Let us face the plan and repeat the pledge in unison. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
This is Councilman Bradford.
President.
Councilman Everson.
Here.
Councilman Leach.
President.
Councilman Moore.
President.
And Councilman Bowman.
Here.
And Councilman Bowman.
Here. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
A minute.
Motion by Councilman Everson and second by Vice Chair Bowman. Is there any discussion? Please vote. And the motion on the minutes is approved. Awards and recognitions at this time. I'd like to recognize my friend and cohort, Mario Chavas, Commissioner. Would you like to come forward and have a few remarks, Mario?
Stephanie's just missing her days on the commission. She didn't want to see the committee.
I get it all the time, John. Don't worry. Greetings, council, mayor, C.A.O. Councilman Florrie, I appreciate you letting me come up here. I wanted to represent one of my constituents. He didn't have the opportunity to be here, and he wrote me a letter in regards to the legislative piece that you brought forward in regards to the M.P.C. And I'll just go ahead and read it. This is on behalf of Dick Rider, 270 Wallace Lake Dam Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71115. Let me express that I am an individual entrepreneur who wants Shreveport to grow business and support our youth so they would want to make Shreveport home. Never once in this endeavor did I feel like the city department, M.P.C., was supportive of this business and tax producer till we had meetings with Cato, I'm sorry, with council, parish members, and city government asking for assistance. I can never relate or correspond with the M.P.C. because of the lack of concern, in parentheses, always wanting something else from us, unparentheses, about a business trying to make a difference tax-based. We need to make it easier for businesses. I do not think I need to go over all the details from the plants to the entrances, but you could ask Mayor M.P.C. or Sarah McCann, architect, if needed. We felt that the whole time that we were working with somebody at the M.P.C. who had a closed-door policy that wanted it his way or the highway attitude, the whole time I was saying to myself, if I am 65, have the capital and the track record on businesses with tax bases going through this much difficulty, why would our youth want to settle in Shreveport, stay here? Look towards Texas, maybe. We need in our M.P.C. office a more business-friendly attitude with an open door, encouraging, not discouraging, attitude. Thank you for your time, and go to Shreveport respectfully. Dick Rider.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys, for the time.
Any questions? Thank you. All right. At this time, does any other council member like to be recognized at this time?
I would, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Bradford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask that Attorney Randy King will come forward. He had presented to me through electronic means some information that I thought was intriguing, and I wanted him to come and present it, just make a few statements regarding it to the council. Attorney King, will you come and introduce yourself, sir?
Yes. Thank you. My name is Randy King, Dick Rensfield King. I'm an attorney. I'm 70 years old. I practice law at 750 Southfield Road, Shreveport, 7106. Two months ago, I sent a letter. I actually had hand-delivered a letter to each of you, and mayor and the C.A.O., on behalf of Suez of North America. Suez is an international company. They are the second-wardest provider of water and sewer in the world. They have operations on every continent. Suez has an interesting history for those historians. It began with Ferdinand Deliseps, who engineered and constructed the Suez canal.
Mr. King, may I ask you to please to speak about 12 inches away from that mic so we can hear.
Thank you, Mr. Florrie.
Thank you.
Anyway, this is a national corporation. They've been on the New York Stock Exchange almost 100 years. It is a public company, subject to all the reporting requirements of public company. In the water and sewer business, they're the only one that I have found who does not have their hands dirty. They have never been in a scandal. They have never been sued for anything irregular. How did I get there? How did I know Suez? This all came to me as a result of a breakfast meeting with my wife, who had been talking to Mr. Corbin as to why our water rates were so high. And Mr. Corbin, my wife, is sitting in the back row back there. My wife says, "You're smart enough. You can figure this out. You can come up with a resolution. You can find how to fix this problem." So she challenged me. And what husband doesn't take the challenge of his wife? Well, I did. I got every bit of public information that's available from the city, from every source. I talked to everybody that I could. I represent nobody but me and Mr. Dixon, who is my partner in this quest. After researching every national provider of water or sewer, the only one that stood out that was willing to work with the municipality to come up with a unique plan for each town, each city, each county was Suez. Mr. Dixon and I contacted Suez. They said, "Give us everything you can." Surprisingly, we were able to give them everything they wanted. And mayor and council, they're interested in Shreveport. This is a multi-billion dollar corporation in Europe headquartered in the United States that wants to come to Shreveport. How many international companies do we have here today? They have come up with preliminary plans. They want to meet with you. They want to meet with a committee of you. They want to meet with you, Madam Mayor, and Mr. Crawford. They want to tell you what they can do. They believe they have solutions. What will they do? They'll buy water and sewer from you, give you a check. It will not bounce. They have looked at Shreveport. They don't think that's the best idea for Shreveport because they believe it would be better for the city to maintain operative control. It would be better for the citizens. And I have been one of your citizens for 70 years. I've lived here all my life and done business here all my life. This, in our opinion, is a no-lose offer. Just negotiate with Suez. The concession model that they want to offer the city is a 40-year concession. Bowser just did a concession with Mancheck last year. But their offer to you is they will take over the debt that was incurred for the bonds to pay for the consent decree. They will pay millions of dollars in additional money. They will pay millions of dollars each year to Shreveport in addition to the millions that they will pay up front. I don't feel comfortable telling you how many hundreds of millions they will offer, but it is significant. Suez wants to come to town two weeks from today. They want to send an entire team to show you their seriousness at really making a deal with Shreveport. Though they have done a deal with a small town in Mississippi, Laurel, Mississippi, they operate water and sewer in Laurel. Each one of you has a package of materials marked Suez. Look in there. Call the mayors. Call the head of water and sewer. I challenge you to find somebody better. They want to offer a solution. Their solution is that they will operate it for you. You still own the asset, if you want to own the asset. Right now, all the citizens like me, we want a solution. We want you to do something that will leave a legacy to the city of Shreveport. I've looked at Mr. Weatherston's comments concerning the infrastructure. He had one, his last report to you was dated February 2017. In reading between the lines, it's pretty disastrous. He is asking for money to organizationally operate water and sewer, and he is saying that it's not being done. We are behind. I'm an attorney. I used to be United States attorney a long time ago, before I had gray hair. Folks, you've got a consent decree that you're not really responsible for because you didn't do it, but you're responsible for implementing it, and right now, you're behind. Suez can save you. My request? Create a committee. Do something. Negotiate. The negotiation is free. I'm not here asking for a penny from Shreveport. I'm here representing a company that wants to give you something and give something to the citizens of Shreveport. Now, I know I don't have much time. Please ask me questions because I am available to answer anything that I can.
Is it your belief that this would lower the water rates?
It is possible. The water rates in several...
Could be your initial...
The reason I say that...
I didn't hear any more about it after the initial statement that that was why you found them.
I wanted to...
Could you elaborate on that?
I will be happy to. My water bill at my home two years ago was $100 a month. In the summertime, I'm over $675 a month. Candidly, I had not paid attention to these issues in front of the council and what you were faced with when you were forced to sign the consent decree. I had not kept up. I just paid my water bill like most people heck do. It was only until my wife started calling Mr. Corbin and we found out what was going on and why, then I become involved. After that, I found out what was happening in the Highland area, in the Cedar Grove area, and in all these other places. I have heard statements from employees of water and sewer. I have heard statements from engineers who've worked with water and sewer. I've heard from the little grandmother who lives in Cedar Grove, who's on Social Security, got $875.
I was just curious if the Suez people can lower the water rate.
Shreveport would make, if it's a concession agreement, Shreveport would be in position to lower water rates once it got itself out of this huge debt. The answer is yes. But Shreveport, under a concession model, will be the entity.
How long do you think that would take?
You have to get in here and get... I'm not the person to ask that. I'm not the city engineer. Somebody needs to come in and organize this program. I think Mr. Weatherston would love somebody to come in who has been doing this all over the country and get a hold of it and shake it real hard.
It certainly is some interesting information. I appreciate you bringing it up. I was just curious about the, you know, like I said, it's kind of the opening, it wasn't the closing, so I'm curious.
Because it's ultimately under the concession agreement, which is what Suez is going to recommend to you, concession agreement, you, the mayor, the C.A.O., councilman, you are in control of the rates, and you will always be in control of the rates. Yesterday, I was called by a Shreveport news station, and a reporter was asking me some questions, and I said, I just turned the tables on her, and I said, "Okay, what would you think if AEP, old SWEPCO, was operated by the city?" And she started laughing. And I said, "What do you think if Center Point, old ARCO, was operated by the city?" She laughed again. I said, "Water is nothing other than a utility, and in many places, it's operated by a private company. If you wanted to sell it, you wanted to dump it and get rid of everybody, you could." Suez has told me that not one person, either under the concession or sale model, would lose their job. They will pick up every employee at their current rates. They will, even with Nassau County in New York, Nassau County was the county that was devastated by Hurricane Sandy a couple of years ago. They hired Suez to come in, clean up, and maintain their county. Some of the employees did not want to become employees of private, a private partner, Suez. Suez agreed to pay those, Suez agreed to allow those employees to stay, county employees, and Suez paid their salaries to the county. Suez will come into town, and they will do something unique for you. They will sit down with you and tell you what they can do based on the conditions that you set for them. There is no other provider that's going to do that. Each one of those towns and cities that I put in your package, everybody has done something a little bit different. I know of no other provider, no other international corporation who will come down and say, "What do you need? How much do you need? Let's see if we can put the deal together."
Hey, a quick question. Let me make sure. Now, have you all met with the mayor and C.A.O. or are you requesting a meeting? I'm not clear.
I am requesting some negotiation with Suez. I don't care who is with. I'd love to do it with the mayor or the C.A.O. or a committee appointed by the council. This is too good an opportunity.
But I'm saying, have you all met with the mayor?
No, ma'am.
You're saying you want to meet with the mayor.
No, ma'am. I have requested meetings, and they have not gone answered.
Okay. And I think the, let me be clear on the other thing.
Our office did meet with him. I do want to make that clear.
Absolutely. Okay. Absolutely. The attorneys all?
I have met with the city attorney.
Oh, with the city attorney. Okay. Well, that's, okay. Okay. All right. And so, the second thing, you said that you all are not asking the city for any money.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, you're doing better than I am because I'm asking for money all the time. So I'm thinking I must be talking to the wrong people then. Y'all have money. I might need to, for some of the things I need done in my district.
Ms. Lynch?
Let me, I'm just trying to kind of get a handle on what you're saying. So there has been a meeting, I guess, at some point. I don't know because I don't really have enough information. I understand what you're saying, but if they've already met with you, then...
Ms. Lynch, I'm going to answer that question directly. We were requesting meetings. From what I understand, Mr. Crawford suggested that I meet with the city attorney, and that, I believe, was out of an abundance of caution because Shreveport has found itself being sued by so many lawyers in town. I met, and we had a really good meeting with Mr. Bradford, but we haven't gone anywhere since that time. Suez wants to come to Shreveport. I believe you have, let's analogize water and sewer to a used car. The hoses are starting to rot. Your asset is worth more today than it's going to be worth next month or next year.
I understand, but I don't think we're going to get through all of the particulars and the nuances of anything dealing with what you're talking about here, right now.
I understand.
I got the general...
I'm requesting a meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? I do want to make clear for the record, I know we have a lot of visitors here, that we did request Mr. King, form Suez, and RFP is outstanding, active RFP is out there for the Water and Sewer Department, that Suez should apply for that or respond to that RFP. In fact, I did send him the link directly, so to say that there has not been any movement, I think it's unfair, but I do want to make it clear that they do have the information for that RFP. Whether or not they choose to respond is unknown. And so, I do appreciate Mr. King for coming, but I do want to make that clear for everyone up here.
Mr. Bradford, you made me aware of the RFP for billing and customer service.
Operations.
And that's a one-point, I think the RFP proposal said 1.2. I have passed that by Suez. Suez doesn't understand, I said this to a letter to Mr. Crawford, Suez doesn't know why anyone like the city of Shreveport would pay anybody for something that Suez will do for free. Suez doesn't want to come here for a million dollars.
I believe you answered the question, King. Let me refer to Mr. Councilman Bowman. He asked questions.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question. You said that we were behind. You said, was that behind the consent decree?
On the consent decree.
Yeah.
That's not correct.
I thought we were ahead of schedule.
We're ahead of schedule.
I thought we were a bit ahead of schedule, so I...
If you read Mr. Featherstone's reports, it indicates...
Mr. Featherstone and Mr. Westerman.
Westerman, I'm sorry. Barbara Featherstone, Mr. Westerman. Mr. Westerman's reports, they indicated that it was going to take well in excess of $350 million, and he was making recommendations to do certain things. I don't think that any of those recommendations that he made in his report dated February 2017 have actually been done. I've been practicing law here for a long time, 45 years. Some of the members of water and sewer, some of the employees of water and sewer are actual clients. I've been asking, where are you? What are you doing?
Well, I think it's accurate to say that the consent decree, you know, could end up going over budget, but I think it's inaccurate to say that it's behind.
That's incorrect.
Mr. Chairman, have you finished? Okay. Attorney, listen, I appreciate you coming. I was intrigued by what I saw, proud to, despite, I didn't receive this package today.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford.
And certainly, there will be some conversation regarding the feasibility of what Suez is proposing, and if we see where it's beneficial, then I think there may be some activities that will give you further information, but it gives us opportunity to review what we have, and again, thank you for coming down.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, does any other council member need to be recognized? Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and members of council and to our publics. We have two or three announcements to make today. The first one, earlier today, we held a culmination luncheon for our 2017 mayor summer interns, and these students have shown academic success and skill in their respective fields of study and did a great job this summer working in our various city departments, and I want to, once again, say thank you to our department heads and our leaders, and also thank you to the council members for allowing them to become a part of what we do in the city, trying to help develop young minds to know how to serve from the governmental arena. So we did have a great combination today, and those young college students were very appreciative. This week, we will have in our city the LMA Association 80th Annual Convention, and I think most of you probably have received some information about it. I know some of the council members will be in attendance. I also will be participating in several of those events this week, and I'd like to thank Ms. Karen Barnes, I don't know if she's in the audience today, who's done a fabulous job in getting us ready to host this event. So that event will be starting this Thursday, and you're invited to come down to the Shreveport Convention Center because it's going to be held here in our city and become a part of some of those sessions. Last week, we had the pleasure of hosting, of course, our governor, Governor John Bell Edwards, for a press conference in our executive conference room to announce the award of Hazard Mitigation Grant Program dollars to several local entities throughout the capital region where significant flooding damage was sustained in 2016. These grants will be used to fund, of course, local resiliency projects aimed at equipping local governments with the tools needed to better withstand natural disasters in the future. The allocation for Cato in this recent announcement came to more than $1.6 million, and in December, we received in Cato $689,000 or almost $690,000 to reduce the number of repetitive loss in the parish and city of Shreveport. I've asked our staff if they would pull together a list of some of those properties that continue to flood, and so we'll be contacting some of those families. We are aware of several of those families that have lost their homes actually from flooding that has really been repeating itself in certain areas. And I can tell you, we have several properties, I know in the M.L.K. area, we have some over here in the Allenville area, and we'll be looking at those properties and those homes in various areas in our city to see what we can do to help those families with the funding. Although I was not in the office last week, I did speak to the governor, and he's assured us that he's going to do everything he possibly can to help us with hazard mitigation grant funding so that we can help our families. At this time, I'd like to have, it's Mr. Wells here, Ms. Kelly Wells, who is the executive director of the Shreveport Bowser Sports Commission, to come forward and to give us an update on the Red River Balloon Rally. He and Mrs. Stacy Brown, who is a president there of the Shreveport Bowser Convention Tourist Bureau, and we had that rally a little over a week ago, and it was also, we had the U.S. Hot Air Balloon Competition Championship here in Shreveport. So I'm going to thank both of these people for the great work they do to attract wonderful, you know, activities to our city, sports with Mr. Kelly Wells, and of course, just festivals and conventions. Ms. Stacy Brown does a great job, who is also Mr. Kelly's boss, but they do a great job bringing people to our city, and we want to say thank you so much for all that you do. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor Tyler, Chairman Florrie, and City Council. People have always said I've had a lot of hot air, and so luckily, we were able to release a lot of that a couple of weeks ago. But this is kind of a neat story, and both of my bosses are here today, Mayor Tyler, Coach Billy Montgomery, who's the chair of the Sports Commission, appointed by all four government entities. We've got Lauren Nicely Rab, who's at the Hilton Shreveport. Not only does she do a great job of selling the Hilton, but she's also an accomplished artist, and so this is the second year that she's actually done a hot air balloon painting. In fact, Albuquerque is the benchmark of hot air ballooning, and the Albuquerque folks were there, and I don't even know if I've told her that yet, but they want her to put in something to maybe even do the Albuquerque poster for this year. But we wanted to present this to Mayor Tyler and the City Council as it's signed by each of the balloon pilots that competed and some of our key folks. I get a lot of credit and get to stand in front of folks, but it really did take a village. We had over 70 sponsors involved with this. We had over 500 volunteers. I really want to just compliment, you know, Traffic and Engineering John and that group over there for helping us out with East Kings Highway, the Shreveport Fire Department, and EMT for coming out on a pretty hot afternoon. Luckily, it started cooling off in the evening, but they just did a phenomenal job. The Shreveport Police, we really did a good traffic and engineering plan that really worked out well, and normally, when you have big crowds, you have some logistical issues, but other than it being hot, which we really couldn't deal with, I think it worked out pretty well. I saw a few of y'all out there. Also got Pat Harwell, who has the Great American Escapes, but he's also, if you want to ride in a balloon, then Pat can take you up if he hasn't already. And of course, even Casey here, you know, has helped out some. So, I mean, there's just a ton of... just a ton of folks that are here, Harold Sater with Encore, and it just really took a village. And I don't know if Chancellor Clark was able to make it, but he really opened up the LSUS campus, got out there, and it rained for two weeks. So, I think his Bush Hog bill this year is going to be pretty expensive. But the great thing at the end of the day was, we didn't spend a dime on the event. We had a pretty big budget, but we're able to make some money and invest that into some other events that we may not have as much of opportunity to make.
We have to take a note of the way that Kelly's in.
Go with Kelly.
You made the picture, you wasn't...
You gotta get your picture, Kelly.
Yeah, yeah, I would say Pat. Oh, that's a balloon gal.
Turn around here.
Look this way. Look that way.
There we go, hold it. Thank you.
While you're doing that, I don't know if we all got a chance to go, but I was saying that I took my family, and we had a fantastic time. We met a bunch of other friends who all had their kids, and it was just a great event, so family-friendly, so much fun and exciting. It was really a good crowd. And it was one of those things where I think we were more intimidated that the parking would be bad until we got there and realized, oh, no, it's actually not so bad. I mean, there was, there was a lot of people there, but they were directing it well, well-managed, and this was a really great event, something that, you know, people in the city can be proud of, and a low cost for people to be able to experience that type of entertainment. So, it was really good.
Yeah, and one person, DeNero Washington here with Sport Training, kind of called him a couple weeks out. And again, when we started realizing we have a pretty large crowd with it, you know, part of that traffic and logistic problem was getting him and his team to come out last minute, you know, work with the Caddo School Board, and Lee Hedges Stadium, and Captain's Street High School. And so, having that off-site parking, sometimes it's a gamble getting yourselves into it, but I really appreciate Mr. Washington and his team stepping on board last minute and working that out, so.
I heard compliments about that. We were lucky enough to find a close parking spot, but I heard people who were taking the shuttle were, you know, spoke really highly of it.
And I'll mention to Power Boat Nationals and Mario Chavez, if you don't know that, besides Commissioner, he's also a professional hydrofoiler. So, if you want to know what hydrofoiling is, you need to come down to Riverfront Park Labor Day Weekend on that Saturday, Sunday. And we've been working with the team, and I know the aquarium will be opening up on that Thursday, so we're real excited about being part of that grand opening and really bringing power boating and hydrofoiling down there, so. Can get Mayor Tyler up in a hot air balloon, so I hope we can get out and hydrofoil Mr. Chavez.
I don't ride in hot air, I don't ride in... Thank you so much. Really do appreciate them. They work really hard to bring that balloon around. You'll be back next year? Be back next year again?
Yes, it'll be back next year. We've got the Nationals that are working for the southeast region for 1920, so it'll be the same week.
Okay. Thank you, thank you so much.
I may, I may shouldn't know this, but economic impact is the balloon race on the city?
Last year's between $750 and $1 million. We don't have the numbers back from that. In fact, we're still waiting on, Brookshire's did a lot of pre-sale in their area grocery stores, so we should have those results back on Friday. So, as far as economic impact, there's a lot going on, you know, Paul McCartney was going on over in Bossier, but I can tell you, we gave Paul a run for his money. We had, you know, record turnout, you know, on that Friday and Saturday night.
It's in that range, usually in that range yearly?
Sir?
Usually in that range on a yearly basis, annual basis?
You know, I think we had, we did some surveys out on the fields, and so I think, you know, last year was a new event. This year, a lot of friends and folks from the Shreveport Bossier area brought their families in. We had folks from Alabama and Michigan, a lot of folks from South Louisiana. And, you know, my estimate right now, as far as attendance, you know, without our biggest share of tickets in, was probably anywhere between 14,000 and 20,000 between the two nights. The balloon pilots, and many of these are business owners, none of them, except for one lady, was from Louisiana. So, in effect, you really had about 40 business owners, folks. And last year, we did this at the opening reception. I think only a handful had ever been in the Shreveport area before, so I think it really showed them what we have to offer. They loved the flying conditions. You know, we did, you know, we did, we had zero, you know, the biggest thing is not the money. It's, we had zero safety incidents. We did have a few calls from the media, and they, you know, they had some balloons laying in their garden, you know, and let them know every balloon landing is a, is a crash. So, but it's a controlled crash, and it's just like you're flying airplanes. So, great opportunity. I think the community in the region really loved it, and we hope to learn some more things and hopefully have you on board, you know, for next year. I know Mr. Clark mentioned Mayor Tyler and the crowd on Saturday. We want to do more events like that. So, there's some talks about maybe some Cinco de Mayo, and really making that a larger event, and, you know, some other events. We're very open if you've got opportunities. Our best ideas come from folks like y'all. They really want to see something big and know that it'll do well in our area.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you so much as well. And our last announcement, we continue to serve our citizens with numerous events. Of course, we've supported quite a number of things since we last met. Farmers Market at Festival Plaza on Saturdays, Movies and Moon Beams featuring Arthur Christmas at AB Palmer, Red River Roadrunners Fun Runs at Southern Hills, that's a difficult phrase to say, and AC Steer. Of course, we had our Shreveport Dog Park Ribbon Cutting. We helped facilitate, of course, the Red River Balloon Rally by providing barricades and first responders. So, we've had a number of things that have occurred since we last met, but we have a lot of things that are coming up on tap for the next few months here in Shreveport, and we look forward to some more great things. Those are the announcements that we have for today. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, before we move on, I'd like to recognize some constituents of my district E, the actress Pierce Johnson and Genesis, and I believe...
What did you say, Robert?
Robert. It's so good to have you with us today, okay? Glad to see you all. Good stay away. Mr. Green, I don't, anyone have questions for Mr. Green? Mr. Green, thank you for your service. At this time. Mr. Sweeney, do you have us a master plan committee report update?
Yes, sir. We met on July the 7th, just a few weeks ago, and our biggest issue is we can't seem to get a quorum of this group, so we're going to poll the members and try to find a better time and day to have our meeting, because if you can't get a quorum three months in a row, it means it's time to change your, your time schedule. So, but we did have some conversation with those members that were present. We talked about the progress that has been made since the adoption and implementation of the UDC on May the 15th of this year. We went over the 26 amendments that are on your agenda today that are for the purposes of corrections to the UDC. If you recall back over the last several months, I said that when this document was approved, there would be errors and mistakes and oversights that needed to be addressed, and that is the purpose of the 26 amendments. And we went through each and every one of those to review the, the impact and the outcome of what those changes would mean to the city. We also did mention the fact that we are making very good progress with the parish on the UDC. And in fact, we've got it narrowed down to 11 amendments for their version of the UDC, which will be separate and distinct from y'all's. And the MPC Board has already reviewed, or will be reviewing, those changes, actually, at their meeting on August the 2nd. And that will be forwarded on to the Parish Commission for their consideration. And hopefully, keeping my fingers crossed, the Parish Commission could very likely fully adopt the, their version of the UDC in August. And we haven't worked out all the details, more than likely, the implementation or effective date of their UDC would be the first part of October, about a 30-day buildup time for the transition from the old code that they have to the new UDC for the parish. And again, they will be two separate, distinct documents. I'd say 99.5% the same as the city's, but with a few variations. And we've, we've lived this long with two separate codes, and we can do so going forward. But the fact that they're that similar is a major step forward.
Any question?
I'll just say briefly, yesterday, I did mention that, you know, we may have some edits, and I know that Karen has done a good job. Karen Strand has taken the language, and she has made some amendments to the attachment. I would like to just remind council members to take a look at that attachment, let me know what things you might be concerned about. Keep in mind, as we discussed before, these things originate from the MPC, but they can be amended or, you know, passed in part, you know, so we can pass those parts we're comfortable with, we can exclude those parts that we think bear further discussion. And so if you have some concerns, let us know, because I'll be working on something for that with Karen, and she has updated that with some good language in there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no public hearing today adding legislation. Ms. Lynette, we...
We have that.
We have the following requests to speak in accordance to Section 1.11. I'll ask five chairs to control those, please.
We have Mr. St. Emir's speaking on 1.45.
St. Emir's, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101 apartment, M110. Today I come with a concerned matter, and I'd like for the authorized annual action to the U.S. Department of Housing Authority to be taken as it is. The people who work there put in a lot of hard work, all the time, helping others who want help getting housed. They work, and they work very hard to help them, and for those who want help, to have independent living, as they always enjoy having, because independent living is very, very important. It's good for people to have a home, or even apartment of their very own, who love their homes and like to take good care of them. I think housing has been around for a long time. They've been doing this for many years, of which I could not be very specifically, since I wouldn't really know for sure. But I do know that they are a very good bunch of people, and they need this annual action plan to help them, to keep going strong all the time, to help these people who want independent living. If you were to vote yesterday on, yesterday on this, I hope you'll vote yes. It would be appreciated. Enjoy your wristbands, and I saw the dog park.
Okay, we'll move to confirmations and appointments next. We'll take these up independently per request of the council. The first one is Dr. Lonnie McCray, Greater Shreveport Human Relations Commission reappointment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, motion by Councilman Everson, second by Councilman Bradford. Any discussion? Please vote. And they is confirmed. Next one's Mr. Prennis Smith, Greater Shreveport Human Relations Commission reappointment. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilman Bradford, second by Councilman Everson. Any discussion? Please vote. And that is confirmed. Mr. Lakeisha Russell Coleman, Shreveport Implementation and Redevelopment. Okay, by Councilman Bradford, second.
And then Councilman Bowman made the motion, and then either I or Bradford seconded.
All right. Got it, Council? Clark? Any discussion? Please vote.
Who made the second?
Yes. Please vote. That nominee is confirmed. Attorney M. Thomas Arsenault.
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion by Councilman Everson, second by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? Hung up, yeah. Hey, please vote. And it's confirmed. Okay, Mr. Lloyd Thompson, Shreveport Implementation and Redevelopment Authority.
So moved.
Second by the chair. Motion by Councilman Everson, second by the chair. Any discussion? Please vote. Okay, that motion passes. Attorney Mary Jackson, Shreveport Airport Authority.
So moved.
Second by the chair. Any discussion? Please vote. And that passes. Mrs. Margaret Shee Hee Cole, Shreveport Air Authority. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Please vote. And it carries. Consent agenda legislation. There are no items, so we'll, please continue.
On the consent agenda legislation, we have no resolutions and ordinances to be introduced. Ordinances to be adopted, resolutions to be adopted, Resolution 127, to celebrate and commemorate the life of Rodrick Duane Giliard.
Do we do these all at once?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Resolution 128, suspending certain provisions of Chapter 10 and any applicable provisions of the Shreveport Unified Development Code of the Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to sale, dispensing, and consumption of alcoholic beverages on August 5th, 2017, for approximately 2:00 PM until 11:00 PM at the James Burton Street Fest located on Common Street and the 700 block of Texas Street. Resolution 129, suspending provisions of Chapter 10 and any applicable provisions of the Shreveport Unified Development Code of the Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to sale, dispensing, and consumption of alcoholic beverages on August 5th, 2017, between the hours of approximately 3:00 PM and 2:00 AM at Fairfield Avenue for the Bears Trip. Resolution 130, celebrating Mrs. Rinda B. Sanders Jefferson, 101st birthday.
So move to adoption of consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Councilman Everson, second by Councilman. Any discussion? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Number 30. 130. You know, you know Mrs. Jefferson. Right, but 101 years old, they're just to be cherished. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Please vote.
Stephanie, you know your mic is on.
Please vote.
That was for him.
There you go.
He's doing fine, it's all about him. On, there are no ordinances. Regular agenda legislation resolutions are second reading final passage. Resolution 124, authorizing the donation of Shreveport Police Department's surplus property, significantly retiring two horses at the end of their service career.
So moved. Motion back, Councilman Coleman, second by Councilman. Any discussion? Please vote. And passes.
Resolution 125, authorizing the submission of the 2017 Annual Action Plan to the United States Development Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So moved, second. Any discussion? Please vote.
The chairman normally gives us an overview of this report.
By memory.
We already voted too late.
And it passes.
Resolution 126, amending the fee schedule for the Emergency Medical Service Division of the Shreveport Fire Department.
So moved, second. Any discussion? Please vote. And motion carries.
We have no resolutions under introduction of resolutions, not to be adopted prior to August eighth. Under introduction of ordinances, we have one ordinance, an ordinance to amend various sections of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code, May two thousand seventeen version.
Move for endorsements, chairman. Second. Any discussion? And that passes.
Under ordinances on second reading and final passage, ordinance seventy-three, amending the two thousand seventeen debt service fund budget, appropriating the funds authorized therein.
So move. Second. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion carries.
Ordinance seventy-four, amending the two thousand seventeen capital improvements budget.
Second. Motion by Councilman Everson, second by Councilman Coleman. Any discussion? Will you please vote? Motion carries.
Ordinance seventy-five, an ordinance amending the two thousand seventeen airport's enterprise fund.
Second. Second by Councilman Bradford. Motion made by Councilman Everson. Any discussion? And that's about it.
Under table legislation, I don't think we have any recommendations on-
And I see no property standards, appeals, and no A.D.L. appeals.
No.
No M.P.C., C.B.A., or N.T.C. appeals. Done after business, chairman. Are there any reports at this time for the officers, boards, or committees? Councilman Coleman?
Mr. Chairman, as I announced yesterday, there will be an audit finance committee meeting on Tuesday, August eighth, at two o'clock, for the sole purpose of hearing support from the external auditor from Carl Ray Zingram on our two thousand sixteen financials. And I invite all council members to attend.
Will the city attorney be there? I will be. All right, as the clerks report.
On the clerk's report, we have five confirmations that are subject for confirmation, and five appointments that are subject for confirmation on August eighth. They were Attorney Tree the Hugh for the Shreveport Human Relations Commission, which is a reappointment. Pastor Roosevelt Seaberry, Shreveport Human Relations Commission, reappointment. Mr. James L. Pennell, Cattle Parish, Cattle Boje Parish Port Commission, reappointment. Mr. Billy Montgomery, Shreveport Boje Sports Commission, reappointment. And Miss Simone Hennessy, the Municipal Fire Police Civil Service Board. And that's all for the clerk's report.
All right, additional communications? From the mayor?
No, none, thank you.
Oh, mayor, just say something.
It's a great day to be in Shreveport.
Any additional communications at this time from councilmen?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Is someone here from Public Works Solid Waste, Mr. Robert Mead?
Yes.
Director Woods here.
Mr. Woods is here, director, yes.
I just have a, you know, question regarding assets to the, to the landfill. It came to my attention that there has been an alternate route for the, for the packers to use to go because of the Woodward Road being structured.
Right, we've been taking one sixty-nine.
Is there a reason why they can't use the more-
The bridges.
Bridges?
The bridges, won't handle the packers. The load.
Weight.
The weight of the packers. So we don't want to take a chance on that.
I mean, who, who made that call?
Well, we were asked, the citizens called us. They had some concerned citizens out there. We don't have any posted weights on those bridges, so we weren't real sure. Thought it was better to, to come down on the side of caution and not use the bridges to take one sixty-nine. It's a little bit inconvenient, but it's not that bad.
Okay. I mean, and that's what I heard. I was wondering, because what, what was told to me is that this, residents alone, carpet road, did a petition saying that they didn't want the city packers coming that way. And I was wondering-
No, I didn't see-
When D.O.T.D., somebody would have to, would have to make that call.
No, if there was a, if there was a petition I know about, I haven't seen it if there was one. But, but we made the call ourselves because, like I said, there was no rating on those bridges. We just didn't want to, we didn't want to take that chance.
Erred on the side of caution. And it's only a temporary inconvenience, so it's not-
As soon as the repairs are done, we'll go back to our regular routes.
Okay. And again, I'm, I'm not in any way, you know, conflicting my, my statement about it, but I was just wondering if that, what, what you responded to, and that's not what you responded to.
No.
How much, how much extra time you think it's utilizing to go down there? It's not interfering with the pickup.
No, it's not. No. Right, right now, we're, right now, we're working twelve, fourteen hours a day anyway, so, yeah, just trying to keep up.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. That's wonderful.
Happy birthday, Mike.
Thank you.
Um, you see, I was in a, in a meeting recently, like, real recently, real recently. And, um, just one of the takeaways from that meeting was just how if, when we put our minds to it, that city leaders can come together and figure out how to make something work when we, when we want to make it work, okay? A lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of, um, meetings, a lot of collaboration. Went into that presentation, time, talent, energy. And I'm just asking, and I talked with the mayor about some of this this morning in our meeting, but I'm just asking that, that same focus, energy, time, talent, go into some of our more pressing issues in this city. And our answer not be that we can't figure out what to do. We don't know what to do, we can't figure out what to do. If something is not working, how can we put our heads together to come up with something that does work? And, um, in particular, some of the neighborhoods, particularly inner-city neighborhoods, and I'm gonna ask, and I, I can't, I'm not gonna remember his name right now, to put up a couple of photographs for me, because I wanna say to my constituents, and I've said this to them in various meetings, and, can you flip it? Or do I have to do that? A couple of weeks ago, I went in about a four-block area in Cedar Grove area, part of my district, and there are three council people up here that cover Cedar Grove, so this was just in my particular area of the district. And after I went on about the fourth street, I had to leave because I was about to blow a gas. My blood pressure was up, I had to go take my medicine, and, um, because this is not acceptable. And as I talk with the folks that were in the area, and I'm saying to my constituents that this is not acceptable. We're saying to people in terms of crime, when you see something, say something. Well, it needs to be the same when you see this next door, across the street, down the street. It, something needs to be said. It needs to be reported to the mayor's office, to myself, to the appropriate departments. The one area that we're seeing some challenges in is indeed, and I have a lot of sewer work going on, thankfully, in, in District F. But once they're complete, if the area is not left in, in a, in a condition that is acceptable, there is a number that you can call. It's on the big white boards, right? There's a number on there. That number is two oh seven, two seven three six, two oh seven, two seven three six. It says two four seven. So that's around, you don't have to call me at eleven thirty, even though people have. That's a two four seven number. The city has a contract with a company to make sure that around the clock, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, that you can call and have your concern addressed. There's also another number, city number, engineering, that you can call, that is six seven three, six, six three, seven five. And there's one other number I need to give out. And I'm, I'm assuming it's still working. I haven't had to use it. But is the citizen concerning response line that's still? I'm not sure. Okay. The six seven three fifty thirteen number? I'm, I'm not sure about that one. Okay. All righty. Well, we were using that at one time as a citizen concern number. But of course, you know, my folks have my number and I'm sure they have the number to the mayor's office. Okay? Um, so, yes. So all I'm saying is, we are going to, and one of the things, and, and I know the council, you know, stepped up to the plate some years, years, years ago, and then, and created the neighborhood investment programs. And, um, and I'm just, you know, as we go forward, we've got to figure out a way to strengthen our neighborhoods, strengthen our people that want to be engaged. There are too many communities that do not have neighborhood associations, particularly in District F. A lot of the folks that were involved and engaged at one time have gotten older and, you know, they don't like being out at night, you know, or they have just cut back. There are some people in, in a couple of communities that, that are stepping up, in Sunset Acres, I know in Queensborough, Demetrius Norman and some others are, you know, stepping up to, to take on some of those responsibilities. But one of the things that the mayor and I talked about today was just how are we going to facilitate empowering communities more, okay? And so, uh, that's something that I'm going, probably going to be asking the council to, to see how we can more readily do that going forward. Because I think that is going to be the catalyst to addressing a lot of the issues, certainly a lot of the calls I know I'm seeing, but a lot of the issues, in particular with crime and, and bolstering our community-oriented policing efforts, and building that trust again. If people are not meeting, people are not organizing, people are not doing things together, then it's kind of hard to build that trust. Because you can't, they can't do it, you know, with every single person. You have to have some way that people are actually coming together and getting together. Groups like Interfaith, you know, is, is a good example. So, um, those numbers, use them. Let's not let these conditions go on, you know, for three weeks. You're seeing stuff out on the curb. That is, that is abnormal. That it should be, shouldn't happen, but if it does, it should be the exception and not the norm. Now, um, for some reason, people are, I don't know if they're spring cleaning, even though it's the summer, but there's a lot of cleaning going on, okay? So let me just, while I'm on this subject, Cleveland Street, Waters Place, Armstrong, I saw a lot of bulk stuff out today. And I'm not, you know, yesterday it wasn't there. Today, it's, it's like overnight. But we'll, you know, continue to just be diligent with, with trying to figure out how best to address these issues and to educate the public on, on how we can get a handle on this. And I think the, the neighborhoods, I know one of the examples I'm giving people is what Highlands is doing. You know, the neighborhood cleanups every night. It's not going to just happen by osmosis. There has to be some effort put within. Faith without work is dead. You've got to put some action to what you're saying. And so, uh, we'll, we'll continue to talk, man, and see what we can come up with. Thank you.
And, and, and I know, I just wanted to, I just wanted to say, okay, I was gonna refer to her, but by a year, a year.
You're fine. I just meant to make sure that I got a chance to-
No, I was, I was, I was, some of these same images are in, in all of our districts, especially mine district. And, and it's, and it's been a sort of a, uh, a likes of, of addressing those, because I see the same type of trash on the streets for weeks. It's in my understanding that, uh, on the days that we have solid waste pickup, that there is a supervisor, somebody who rides those routes to, to see if, if they're being, if the, if the cars are being picked up. So it would seem to me that it would be, it would be, it would be, it would make sense that if those supervisors or managers whoever riding, not, not picking up, but observing the areas, if they could note those, those, those big bulk pickups of, of rubbish, if they could put those on a schedule for the knucklebone truck to pick up something. You do that?
They do. And what you have to understand, councilmembers, when we go out, right now, I'm running four knucklebones. I'm trying to do bulk pickup on Wednesdays and Saturdays. Now, when the, when the supervisor goes out and he sees a problem, then, right now, I, there is so much cleaning up, I think that's a good word, there's so much out there that we can't possibly do it week to week. We're running about two weeks, about two weeks behind. But that's a lot better than we were. At one time, we were almost five weeks behind. But we got it up within a couple of weeks. So what we try to do, like I said, that supervisor makes a note of it, or somebody can call in and let us know that they have a bulk pickup. We schedule it as quick as we can, as close to their pickup day as we can. And yes, but to answer your question, the supervisors are responsible to let us know where the stuff is. We try to get it on Wednesday and Saturday.
Okay. And, and I appreciate that, but, but we should not see it after two weeks. Two weeks ought to be the limit, do you think?
Right now, that's about what I'm running, is about two weeks.
And that you would not say that somebody, whoever, I mean, again, we, some, some of our districts are, are more conscious of their community than others. So if, if, if you don't get called in and it's out there on the streets, I mean, I could tell when grass started growing through it, then I know it's been out there too long. But my, my issue is, you would not deny a pickup just because somebody called in?
No.
It would be, it would be scary.
Oh, no, no, no. Now, we- You pick up a number of them.
I'm sorry?
No, that's our job. We pick up a lot of them and don't get called in.
That's what I'm saying.
No.
But it sure would work a lot better, and it sure would be a lot better neighbor, and it sure would be a lot more cost-effective, and it sure would be easier on our employees and on our equipment and on our tax dollars if people would just call the damn number ahead of time. You know, it's free. And they- And I don't mean that, you know, rude, excuse my language. But, I get frustrated in my neighborhood, and I mean, it's in my neighborhood too. I mean, I had four bulk pickups on my block and the block next to me, of people that didn't call it in, cleared out their backyard of bamboo or whatever it was, just left that stuff on the curb, put, you know, shelves or cabinets or whatever on top of it. It's, you have this big old heap of stuff, they didn't call it in, I had to call it in. Well, then they schedule it, they come out very responsibly and pick it up. But, if those people had called two weeks before they did that, or a month before they did that, or whenever, just figured out, when can they come pick it up? I'll cut it that day, or a few days before that, it would have gotten picked up right away. And so, I say that to say, I know it's not easy, but if all of us can put a little pressure on citizens to call the number in, and don't be rude to your neighbors, you know, have some consideration for your surrounding neighbors, try to call it in. I know that doesn't work for everybody, but it bears mentioning that there is a number, and it is an easy thing to do.
And I agree with you, a hundred percent. But, I will say, and we have to accept the fact that all of our citizens are not that conscious to do that. I mean, we have, I said again, we have different cultures that have different way of doing things. But, I'm saying again, that how do we, how do we do better in educating our citizens? I mean, can we utilize, when we mail out water bills, can we put some type of notification in there saying, you know, just a continuous education piece that will encourage them to do things that they're not, that we know that they're not doing, that we think, what's the cost of putting a fire, a piece of, something saying, this is what you do for bulk pickup, this is what you do, you know, just to educate? I mean, people don't know, they do know, but they, if it's not in front of them, they won't, they won't do it. So, I'm just saying, if we can initiate some means and methods of further education, every street, I think in Shreveport has the, don't be trashy, keep it classy sign. That's an education tool. Something similar to address this serious, this is a serious problem, because I mean, it's everywhere. But, at the same time, you know, we want a clean city. People don't know the process. Visitors don't, 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 don't know that, you know, citizens, they just like, wow, look at all this trash on this street. So, anyway.
Any trick question?
We're together. But, I'm just saying that if we can sort of work at where the trash is not out there too long.
We'll take all the help we can.
Yeah, I believe you're next on the.
Next one.
Thank you so much. And I was going to follow up on what Councilwoman Lynch was mentioning earlier. I totally agree with a lot of what she had to say. And just as a reminder, you know, there have been a couple, they only have two meetings, and it's relatively new, but there is a group that's meeting that is sort of members from different community groups that are kind of meeting to talk about, yeah, it's kind of like that SCITA thing, or an outbreak of SCITA, they're calling it BBC. I know Jenny's been to one of the meetings, I've been to one of their meetings, oh, two of their meetings. And what they're trying to do is kind of talk about, what are those issues that different neighborhood associations all have, and, you know, or, you know, what are some things that they all kind of have in common? And it's true, I mean, I don't know if everyone's neighborhoods are the same, but I mean, I know I represent very diverse neighborhoods, and in each of them, they all have trouble recruiting members, or, you know, keep it, sometimes the same old people who keep these things going for years and years, and they get burnt out of funds, and, you know, it's hard to get other participation. And some of the things that have been working in some of our, you know, in some of my neighborhoods lately, have been, you know, perhaps some more, instead of like the big neighborhood association that has everyone, there's been more block by block, like let's kind of, like one little area in my district is doing these front porch Fridays, where everybody just kind of comes out on their front porch in the afternoons, one Friday every month, and just kind of visits with their neighbors to get to know each other, you know? It's just kind of a, it's, you know, and because they've been doing that, now they're starting a neighborhood watch group, and, you know, they're already seeing some of the activity, the criminal activity in their block decrease, and they've certainly had good response from the police department. And so, you see lots of good examples of where that does work, and, you know, you're absolutely right, that what we can do to encourage that, what we can do to encourage people sort of organizing a little more formally and getting to know their neighbors and getting them out of escrow, how to report what's going on, it does make a difference. And so, just want to mention that BBC group might be a good tool for anyone that, you know, could be interested, and be glad to provide additional information.
Captain Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick things. I'm glad that Councilwoman Lynch brought up the sewer work. And there have been some areas in the district that I represent where I've had concerns about the way that streets were left, or the work sites were left, and things like that. And I will say that after talking to Mr. Crawford about it, things are looking better. And I think that they're working with the contractors and the subs to have a little bit more respect for the neighborhoods that they're in. You know, although you may find it hard to believe, there are some challenging and challenged neighborhoods in District D as well. And, you know, I was looking at the pictures that we saw just a minute ago, and I think as I go through the neighborhood, oftentimes, these large piles of trash and debris are not in front of someone's head. They're at the end of the street, or they're at a vacant lot. And so, whether that's somebody taking the time to load up their stuff and take it to a vacant area, or it's somebody doing illegal dumping, or a combination of it, I know there's some areas on Thornhill, around sixty-six, sixty-seventh street, that are just common dump places. And whether I drive down that street, or I run down it on Saturdays, I can count on there being a pile of tires, and some old TVs, and stuff out there. And I think that, you know, maybe we still have some of those stealth cameras or something, we could employ some of those, but a lot of it is, you know, whether it's somebody from the neighborhood, or it's somebody from someplace else, it's just illegal dumping. And it turns out being our responsibility to do something about it. So, I think there's a lot of things leading to that. But, I am glad to hear that we're no more than two weeks behind on getting our bulk items picked up.
Captain Williams, Stephanie Lynch.
All right, let's be real, y'all. Let's be real. People can call the blank, blank number, but my folks are saying, pick up the blank, blank trash, okay? They're paying taxes. They want the trash, trash day, bulk day, whatever, picked up. That's what they want in return for the taxes that they're paying into the city. Now, the reality is, you know, when they were raising their families, a lot of, we have an older population now, but in their heyday, when they had way more trash, way more things going on, the city was picking up trash. There was not a problem. There was no number to calling in. It was a basic city service. And I'm just saying, you know, and I understand things have changed, the money has changed, the staffing has changed, but the need is still there. And how are we going to fulfill that need? And I think if we could figure out how to do certain other things, we could figure that out as well. What, how I want to see, you know, our tax dollars spent may be different from how someone else in terms of what's important to them, but I'm telling you, what is important to the inner-city communities that I represent anyway, is that they want a clean neighborhood. They want the white ways cut, they want the ditches cleaned out, they want the streets and the sidewalks repaired, they want the trash picked up, basic city services. And it shouldn't be a, I'm not glad about two weeks, because I think that's too long. And I don't think that we're not incapable of figuring out how to make our process, whatever that is, work more efficiently. I think we've agreed over the last two and a half, looking at this over the last two and a half years, that the calling in of the bulk system is not working. It's keeping our city trashier and dirtier, the appearance and the reality. Now, the BBC that you were talking about, Councilwoman Everson, is that for existing neighborhood associations, or just individuals?
It's a, it's a list league group. I mean, they're mostly representatives or former officers of existing neighborhood associations, but some are more, you know, just community leaders. And so, they're trying to grow that to see what the need is out there. So, I think that's, that's dependent on who's willing to.
Okay. And the reason why I was asking, because there are some communities, when I look at Ingleside, and look at Wernal Park, and a couple of other areas that have none, okay, at all. And so, when, you know, if there are neighborhood associations coming together, and they don't have a neighborhood association, so that's really the level that I'm talking about, actually assisting and getting those organizations back up and going. Because, you know, it's nice to have, you know, front porch gathering, and we got people walking outside their house and getting murdered.
Sure.
Okay? So, you're talking about being on the front porch, that, you know, that may not be a feasible in some areas, a feasible thing to do. So, we've got to accept, you know, that, that what people need is different, and not marginalizing, and not being condescending, but understanding that Shreveport, you know, we can't talk about one area as being diverse, this whole city is diverse, and the needs are diverse, and they're different. And, but I believe that we're capable of addressing that, if we put our minds to it.
Councilwoman Brathwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two follow-up questions for administration. Ms. Crawford, do you have an opportunity to speak with Comcast people?
I'm waiting on a return phone call from Mr. Colvin, who is the regional representative. And as soon as I have that information, hopefully this week, I'll pass the phone to council, yourself and the other council members regarding the cable access channel sets.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And the other one is regarding our recycling apparatus, are we getting close to making, this came up in the, in the audit meeting regarding recycling?
We're meeting with a selected vendor next week.
So, we're getting close. But, we're going to need some education time for the.
Absolutely.
So, we should not have interruption of recycling.
Well, I'm not saying you won't have interruption in recycling, I'm saying that you may have a different type of recycling mechanism than you had before, but it should be seamless going from one to the other.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And let me just say, as mayor, we're going to communicate like we always do with council as soon as we can finish that process. We have been working that process now for probably ten months, trying to get us there. You know, we're still under the old contract.
Sure.
And we had to push and push and push from last October to get an answer. Because in the current contract, they could tell us the day before they got rid, quit, whether or not they wanted to renew. Of course, we pushed until we got an answer. But, I've also pushed my staff to, you know, let's try to get something put in place. Recycling will occur. I don't want anybody to print or to put on television that we're not going to recycle. We will be doing some type recycling, and if it's not the very same as it is now, people will have a choice. And the other thing I want to say is, as I visited with Councilwoman Lynch today, you know, one of the things that we've been trying to do in our city, and I do need to say it publicly so our citizens can hear, is we're trying to build pride in our city. Pride is a big deal when it comes to keeping your community clean. And of course, we can pick up trash all day, every day, and we're going to, but we've got to have people who have enough pride about their community. So, one of the things that I talked with Councilwoman Lynch about is, let's try to, even city council members can work with the mayor and her staff to help do this. In every district, you know, we got police liaisons, and one of the reasons they're out there is because they can help us get the message out. We need to have neighborhood associations that are willing to come together to help, maybe on a monthly basis, just to help clean up. We'll send city assisted people out there to help with those areas that are not being addressed. But, I think it's going to be important, and when we talk about one community over another community, some communities are out there, you know, all the time, just cleaning up. But, we have to want to take on some responsibility as citizens. I'm a citizen, and I want to make sure that where I live look okay. So, but that pride is so important. And I think together, we can, as she said, pull together, we can pull together, as mayor and as city, we're all elected. But, we can pull together and come up with some ways to help overcome some of the debris and, you know, I think it's unacceptable for us to have people putting, when they clean up, putting, you know, desks and mattresses on the street. I mean, that's unacceptable. We didn't put it out there, but somebody did. And so, I think it's important for us to come together, and let's come up with some ideas. My office is certainly open to your ideas, I'm going to be speaking with my staff about some ways. But, until we can get people to take ownership and take responsibility, we're going to continue to have this over and over and over again. And so, as you all think about ways that we can make it better, but let's try to help make sure that people understand that they have responsibilities too. I'm going to make sure that we have a schedule in place. We're going to be pushing for that, to do all the bulk pickup, and as some of you have alluded to, you can pick it all up today, and, you know, somebody will put out a bunch of stuff tomorrow, you know, and we'll have to go all over again. And we're willing to do that. It's just that I know that we can get people to look at how they can be more responsible in helping us keep our city clean. Thank you, sir.
I just, I just wanted to say that, Councilwoman Lynch, it's joking, but she said that people coming outside and getting murdered, that's, and one of the colleagues on that, public site, that happened. I just wanted to hear that.
Did you have it on SCITA the other night?
Just coming outside on the porch, that's what? He came outside to check on something.
Right.
Just not coming outside, just walking out the door and getting murdered. I just wanted to go.
It's happening.
Just wanted to put that out there. It's not the truth.
It's happening.
Speaker? Public comment?
Public comment, Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address for record.
Sammy Mears, nineteen oh one Centenary Boulevard, apartment M one ten, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one oh one. I just want y'all to know that I'm wearing this T-shirt today, and my blue wristband and red, blue, red wristband, and I came earlier and gave everyone out to the council so that the council will have something to show their support for MDA. And I gave one to Mayor Ali Tyler as well, and I want you to know, it did not fly or walk up there, I brought it. So, I brought one to everyone. If they had come flying up there or walked up there, and if I had seen it, there would be major problems. I want y'all to know that this is now twenty-nine years that I'm giving to MDA, is twenty-nine years, and one more next year, and I'm sure I'll be around to make it an even old thirty. And I'm going to do the best I can to make it thirty, because I feel like something good may be developing by that time. I like giving to MDA, it's a good cause, I love it, each of you all know that. And eventually, as I did say before, when Don Handy and I came from CC's Pizza, we were on our way, and he's got one too, we did get to stop by, and we saw the dog park just for a little bit. I wanted to see it in person, not just on TV, and we got to see it together. And it does look very nice, I will say that right now. I saw it in person, it's absolutely super.
Mr. Chase Boykin? State your name and address for the representation.
My name is Chase Boydham. I live at one four three Southfield, Shreveport, Louisiana. My name is Chase Boyden, I live at 143 Southfield, Shreveport, Louisiana 71101. I just came to speak very briefly on something that I have filled Jeff Everson's mailbox for quite some time, and bugged him, I'm sure he's ready to block me by now, honestly. But I, I'm an entrepreneur in Shreveport, I've owned eight bars and restaurants in Shreveport over the past thirteen years. And I read about the proposal to possibly change the NPC, and I, my only input is, is that, and if I can offer some sort of comparison, when I first started in the bar business, I used to go down to the ATC, and they had this little window, like a bulletproof window, it was all scratched up, and I used to call it the House of a Thousand Noes. You would go, and they'd always have something you didn't do right, and you'd always have to go away and come back, and, and about eight years ago, there was a guy named Troy A. Bear that took over, one of the only positive things I could say about Bobby General, and, and he totally changed the office. He put these desks in, he made everybody in the office a notary, so he could, you could change your, your applications there, you didn't have to leave and go find a notary. He went to two-year, two-year applications, he just made it so much easier. And like, I go now, and I don't have all the panic attacks about going, but in the past three years, I've opened two businesses, and now, I kind of feel like the NPC is the House of a Thousand Noes. And I just had some serious issues, I owned a business called Bears back in 2015, and I was the only bar, to my knowledge, that chose that I wanted to go smoke-free. I don't smoke, I don't like, I lived above the bar, and the smoke would travel up, I have a seventeen-year-old son, back then he was fifteen or fourteen, and I chose that I wanted to go smoke-free. And I hired Jeff Spikes with I. Architecture to help me build plans for, to do a patio so that, you know, people would have an option to smoke outside, and, to my knowledge, did everything correctly. And I turned it in, I even actually emailed you, I apologize. But, and I appreciate the response a couple of years ago. But it turns out, there was just issues across the street with a building that had no windows, no sign whatsoever, but apparently it was owned by a church. And because of that, even though I predated the church ownership of that property, I was not allowed to add any square footage to my property. Now, I know that's an issue with maybe the, the code or whatever, but it, it turns out that I got held up for a year, and it, and it really affected, okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, we would like to hear you finish.
Okay, sorry. But anyways, I'll try to give the Cliff Notes, I apologize, but it ended up costing me a lot of money. It, it took us over ten months to build the patio, I ended up selling the business, and the, the next owner ended up doing it, and I had the same problems when I opened a business last year on 205 Texas Street, where we got held up, and, and I did no structural changes, but it took over four months. They ended late registration, they used to, you used to get paid more to, to, to have a later deadline, and they've, they've ended that, and it just makes it impossible. And real quickly, I just, I've just seen too many of my friends, I have a lot of friends who are entrepreneurs, my dad owns a business in Bossier, and I'm seeing all these people leave. And I just want to really try to make it easier for people to do business here, and whatever I can do, I can't advocate whether this, the proposal will do that or not, but I just hope it would, because it's very difficult right now, and, and I'm not a rich guy. I, I, like you said, I've opened businesses, and I've always kind of just done everything myself, and bootstrapped everything, and when you have the, when you get delayed and all this stuff, it, it just makes it extremely difficult for a person with, not the means of, maybe somebody with more money, to, to do these type of businesses. So this is my opinion, I appreciate your time, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
And I will say that, to Chase's credit, that porch finally got done, and it was beautiful. It is a very nice porch, and it was a very nice addition to that building in that neighborhood.
It's coming from the-
Yes, it was. No, no, Councilwoman Lynch, you keep forgetting your mic is on.
I'm sorry, I've been watching too much Donald Trump.
But, no, but no, it did, it came out really great, and it was funny, there really was no, there was no objection to that addition, no one in the neighborhood, nor that, that building across the street, there was no objection to it.
Next up, Mr. Jeffrey Jackson? Want to speak about bill of rights? Mr. Jackson, state your name and address, please.
Jerry Wayne Jackson, 1137 Fenwick Drive. I had a meeting scheduled about two years ago for, for my bill of rights, and I missed the meeting, but I, I went in and got a copy of, of the meeting, and I-
I have a copy of my bill. Like, if you'd like to hear it?
You can speak, take the time, listen.
And I'd like to bring the meeting back around, because it's concerning my bill of rights, about a building plan.
Is this regarding appropriate standards this year? What was the address?
1137 Fenwick Drive.
Who's district is that?
Are you aware? Trying to find it on this-
Mr. Tim, Mr. Everson, let's, can we refer that to the city attorney, because we're not familiar with the bill of rights he's referring to?
This is from, yeah, I'm not familiar with what this document is, but he did hand along with it a copy of the, the council agenda from the February ninth and tenth meetings of 2015.
Twenty fifteen.
Perhaps the city attorney, would you please, yeah, I'll look into it.
What are you, what are you, what are you trying to accomplish today, mister?
I want to get the meeting rescheduled.
Okay. Well, we, 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 we're not in a position to do that, I'll think, Ms. Chairman, I think, I think that we let the city attorney review it, and see if indeed it's, it's a candidate for reconsideration, then he would let us know, and the council office will let you know, okay?
And we'll have it.
Can we do that, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so can we refer it to him, and then he will refer it to the city council office? And if we send opportunity to, to establish this issue again, then we'll notify you, and try to get you back on the agenda. Okay, but we, we're not in a position now to act.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
And then, thank you. Now, I'm, Mr. Jackson, I'm going to make a copy of this, and I'm going to give you back the original.
All right, you got both copies?
I did, we have them right here.
All right, thank you.
If you'll just wait over there, I'll give you a copy back.
April 14. Is his address, we have his address?
1137 Fenwick.
It's not only-
It's right.
It's 1137 Fenwick.
We need you, where, where's, where's, where's your property, sir? What, what neighborhood is your property in?
Cherokee Park.
Cherokee Park?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's my district, so I, I need to get familiar with what you, what's going on here, okay? So, you want to speak with me, yeah? No, we want to get his address, can you see right now?
No, we have Mr. Kenneth Craft, if that's-
Mr. K, here?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Kenneth Craft, 157 Archer Avenue, 71105. And the gentleman who spoke right before Mr. Jackson said he lived at 145 Southfield, and that is 71105, he said oh-one, just for the record. And I'm hoping Sammy Mears would consider for MDA getting a haircut, I would be willing to contribute fifty dollars, and others would, I'm sure he could raise about five hundred dollars for a haircut for MDA, that just occurred to me, looking at those lovely locks. But if not-
I can almost feel his stare on your back, but I can't quite see it. I'm imagining he's got-
If he is serious, and, and of course, I'll still give him a ride home, I don't mind dropping him off, it's, I'm competing with Uber and Lyft and the taxis and Sportran, but it's, it's a free ride, and he's smart enough to take it. I just want to thank Chief Crawford for the sales tax, Mike Wood for the tree, Jackie for the council agendas, hope those keep coming in advance from now on, so I don't have to call like I have the last three times. I paid tribute to Ms. B., they always came regularly, she retired and they stopped coming, so something got lost in the shuffle. And Mark Sweeney for calling back about several NPC questions. My concern, and I'll address it more fully when y'all go to do the NPC legislation, is if we break and sort of divorce from the parish, we give up about thirteen percent of the income that the parish contributes, it's not enough. This goes back to nineteen eighty-three with John Hussey and the, and the old police jury, we kept trying, they never would give more. But if we're going to give up the income, I don't know how we're going to give up expenses. When I started in nineteen eighty, there were four inspectors, one retired, they didn't replace it, my boss cut it out, Mike Lofton, the budget director, cut it out in eighty-three, my former boss. Then they went to two, and they're still stuck at two. And another concern is, if we go it alone, will the inspectors still have to inspect zoning proposals outside the city limits? I don't know how that works. What about land that's in this parish and then becomes annexed? That would make sense, but it's, it's a proposal worth consideration, but I'm hard-pressed to find out how it saves us, the proposed savings that I've read about, maybe it will. And finally, I want to remind folks, fifty years ago today, I would leave my home and go to the Orleans Detention House, and I would tutor inmates in business math, fractions, decimals, percentages, no forms, no application, I just, my dad knew the order, and he allowed me to teach. And I would tell them stories and try to shame these inmates, we might try that here. There's a young lady who was born twentieth out of twenty-two children, suffered scarlet fever and double pneumonia at age four, had a leg brace till age nine, barely could walk at twelve, ran race after race, finished last every time, wouldn't give up, and won three gold medals in the Olympics, Wilma Rudolph. I would tell that to these young guys, and they were shamed. They had the mental ability, the physical ability, all they lacked is that spark that Wilma Rudolph had. We've got to do something in our criminal justice system to complete that triangle, Mr. Chairman. The physical ability is there, the mental ability, but until we give them that, that spirit and that drive, which is not going to make a whole lot of progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, if the council have anything to say for this? Who is that, sir?
Did you fill out a form? Okay. Members of the council, it's okay, let him speak?
Yes, sir, as long as they fill out a form.
You'll have to fill out a form now, but we'll let you speak, or we'll fix it, dismiss the council, okay? Come on up, give us your name, your address, and you have three minutes, okay? We need you about twelve inches from that mic, you'll be, come in real loud and clear.
All right. My name is Minister Daniel C. Davis Jr., twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-five West Laurel Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. I'm coming because I said West Laurel Street, it's not an alley, but it, it looks like an alley. And I hear that, I was listening to Mayor Ali Tyler was talking about, about recycling, and the recycle people, I've been, my, my recycle man interrupt at least three, three weeks, because the one, the recycle don't come down that street, because it looks like an alley. And we, we, I know we're getting a lot of money to repair our streets, and I think, I got pictures of the, of my street, and it says at the corner, West Laurel Street. And, but it is, it's, it got grass growing, growing out there, like, like, like an alley, like a path. And I just want to find out what, what means we need to go through to get it blacktopped, smooth, widened or something, so cars can go down this street. It's not an alleyway. It says West Laurel Street, all the rest of the street is paved, I live in twenty-eight hundred block, it's a short block. And it, I just think this needs to be addressed.
Why don't you just call my office, and we'll, we'll look at it for you?
Okay.
Because we're the people that you need to be talking to.
I figured that.
Okay, let's do that. And we'll see you after the meeting.
Oh, who's office?
Sir?
Who's office, call?
The mayor's office.
Okay.
Okay, and I, and I'll, I'll get your number before you leave today.
I'll get it once.
Okay, my CAO will take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No other business, all the council, this meeting is adjourned.